Well, good evening everyone. Welcome to Clarence City Council's last council meeting for the year. I'd like to welcome you, invite you to please stand for the council prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vow safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. I'd like to also acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Thank you. A reminder present that we are again live streaming this meeting via YouTube, and a full copy of the agenda is available on council's website. With that, I declare the meeting open and note apology from Alderman Blomley. I'd also like to invite at this stage, are there any declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate before proceeding? Thank you. I'd now like to deal with the start items. Here's one omnibus motion. I'll just go through those one by one so we've got a chance to comment if necessary. First of all, confirmation of minutes for 23rd of November as circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Any comments on the previous minutes? Thank you. Secondly, that mayor's communication, I'd like to table significant meetings and attendances by the mayor and deputy mayor over the last three weeks. And I'd also like to congratulate one of our officers, Rihanna Airy, who has won an award in the volunteer category. This year, Volunteer Tasmania received 135 nominations across 10 award categories. And Rihanna won the Hydro Tasmania Excellence Award for Best Practice in Volunteer Management. Rihanna is the coordinator of our Clarence Community Volunteer Service and commenced in this role 18 months ago. The volunteer service is actually now comprised of 70 volunteers supporting 93 consumers. And of particular note during this period of COVID, it's taken an enormous amount of initiative and energy. Rihanna's efforts pre and during COVID has significantly increased the profile of the service in the community, with 57 people having come forward in five weeks indicating that they could volunteer in some capacity. So congratulations, Rihanna. Moving forward to item six, tailoring of petitions. Understand there are none from the general manager. Are there any petitions from the floor? I'll just backtrack slightly in the council notes the workshops conducted on the 30th of November, 7th of December, and the agenda briefing the 11th of December. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just inquiring in relation to item four, council workshop. Did you pass that by without...?
No, no, I just said that.
Okay, well, in relation to the council workshops, item four, my question to you is, has any advice been received from the valuer general in relation to the valuation of the land on the proposed development at Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Hospitality School?
Thank you, Alderman James. General Manager?
Yes, it has.
Would the general manager be kind enough to advise us, because I did raise this at last meeting, but at that time it wasn't available. So the extent to which the valuation, for what amount, please?
I'm sorry, that, those amounts are confidential at this point in time.
They need to be, Alderman James, because it involves possible land acquisition and we don't want, we cannot in fact compromise council's negotiation position in any sale or buyback commercial arrangement. Any other questions in regard to item four? Moving on then to item 10, reports from outside bodies, from single and joint authorities, the copying, refuse, disposal sites and authority. I know there's quarterly reports there. Did you wish to add to that at this stage? Thank you. I have nothing to report in regard to Tasmanian Water Corporation or the Greater Hobart Committee. Are there any reports from outside bodies, special committees and other representative bodies?
I'm just wondering whether the deputy mayor would be prepared to just provide us with a summary of the events committee and a couple of the recommendations that were discussed at the last meeting?
Deputy Mayor? There'll be a report coming, I imagine.
That's what I was going to say, there will actually be a report table at the next council meeting when those considerations will have been finalized.
Thank you. Any other reports? Moving on, 11.1, the council notes the information in the weekly briefing reports of 23rd and 30th of November and 7th of December. Okay, that, Alderman James?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I draw council's attention to the weekly briefing report of the 23rd of November and also the 30th of November 2020. In the 23rd of November 2020, it refers to amongst other things, up and coming DSG roadworks. And then on the 30th of November 2020, the refers again to upcoming DSG roadworks within Clarence. Basically, it's a rehash of what actually occurred in the, what was referred to in the 23rd of November 2020. My question through you to Mr. Graham is, Mr. Graham, there seems to be a number of concerns in relation to the amount of traffic that's backing up at the Mornington Roundabout, usually or normally around about the 3pm each day. And in one particular instance, I noticed it was up to Dampier Street. That's on the approach to the Mornington Roundabout traffic. Has there been any discussions in relation to any other DSG roadworks in Clarence other than what's been referred to in the 23rd and 30th of November? And as to whether or not there has been any further communication regarding the Mornington Roundabout and the on-off ramps in relation to those areas within the vicinity of the Mornington Roundabout?
Thank you, Alderman James. Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's been no indications from DSG that they're doing any further investigation or any further maintenance works in relation to Mornington Road. Most of the works involved on the list in the briefings, and they are different, they do include different projects, are mostly maintenance works, but some investigation works that DSG are undertaking.
Okay, there being no further discussion, could I invite a motion that we endorse the officer's recommendations with all the start items, please? Alderman Kendi, second to Alderman Warren, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. I'd now like to invite a procedural motion to move item 11.7.5B, which is under the City Heart, to a new item 11.5.4 under Asset Management regarding the Rosney Park Golf Course area. Could I have a move in a second for that procedural motion, please?
Is that moving the City Heart itself out of governance into asset management?
No, no, it's moving, simply moving part B out of governance into asset management.
Okay, so when we come to the City Heart, part B won't be part of that debate?
Correct.
Yes, Alderman?
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Newington. Being a procedural motion, there's no debate. All those in favour? No, the motion is carried. Against, sorry, there should be an opportunity to vote against. I'll take it carried unanimously. Okay, simply carried with Alderman Edmund abstaining. 11.2, there are no petitions determined since the last council meeting. So I now advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act. First item is 11.3.1, a development application at 60 Cambridge Road, Bell Reef, a partial change of use to residential with additions. Move in a second, please. Moved to Alderman James, second to Alderman Newington. Would you like to speak to it, Alderman?
Yes, I will speak briefly to it, mostly in relation to the part, excuse me, part three of the recommendation. And that is the cash-in-loo, which council seeking for the amount of $20,000, which is for two parking spaces. This has been a matter that's been ongoing. Council has adopted and been fairly consistent in relation to this matter over the years. And there has been a lot of discussion in this place as regards to cash-in-loo amongst other things. The fact of the matter is that there is a requirement for council to seek cash-in-loo when there is a shortfall of car parking spaces in relation to a certain area, which basically is covered under the scheme as part of the code that's been accepted, as part of the planning scheme. It is a lot of money, but nevertheless, council in its wisdom, I believe, has basically set aside some funds and we've already been advised another time in relation to how much is sitting in the cash-in-loo for that particular area. And it is a substantial amount, particularly as because of the nature of Bell Reef and the need for us to consider additional car parking, which may include a multi-story car park if that's a decision council makes down the track. So I know it's awkward at times for the small business, but to be fair, others have paid the cash-in-loo and therefore it is only fair and reasonable in the circumstances that this particular recommendation should carry that amount, excuse me, of 20,000, and I seek council's support.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think certainly seeing some more development around Bell Reef is something we're all supportive of. You know, there's always going to be that mix of competition between residential, hospitality and even in this situation with the yacht club and the slipper. So I think there's a bit of representatives there that were a bit concerned about lack of, you know, impact on each of those different uses. But I mean, look, I think it's a great proposal. I mean, I will add that, you know, from the parking perspective, we need to pull our fingers out and do something about this parking issue sooner rather than later. Because taking the money and not doing anything with it or creating a new policy that actually deals with using that money towards creating more car parking, I don't think we can wait too much longer on that one. You know, we have to deal with it, we have to get that sorted out. You know, I mean, if it was up to me, I wouldn't have any parking in lieu, but at the moment, that's the policy of the council. But I think certainly, you know, we can't keep taking it without actually having a policy to actually spend some of it to do something about that in that space. But anyway, I encourage everyone to vote for this proposal.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am on the bandwagon as not liking this cash-in-loo policy, particularly in areas like this one. We're about to have some discussions about the Kangaroo Boulevard flats. We're about to have some more discussions about car parking in here. There are little cafe owners down here who spent something like $60,000 cash-in-loo when they're one of 14 cafes which are in walking distance of their clientele. I mean, just how long this goes? Now, we can all argue that they've got their customers have to park somewhere and that the customers in that shopping precinct park somewhere. But here we are with a kangaroo bay ferry trial about to fire off. And we've taken all this cash-in-loo off people, right, to provide car parking so people can jump on ferries and shop in Hobart. So I think there is a broader issue, particularly in Bellerie Village, with the ferry services and those sorts of things, where we really do have to bite the bullet and create a whole heap of parking in there, which is designed not only to service the local customers, but to service the increasing use of Bellerie. And even if the ferry trial falls over, there's a fair amount of parking required there because of events such as this one that we are going to be piling on there. And when City Heart reaches its fruition or starts to beat, then we're going to have even more reason to be inviting people in. Now, you know, the cash-in-loo for parking, you know, where are the people in the car park going to park? And I do note that in this particular thing, it is quite clear that the parking area there is going to be temporary. Oh, sorry, it's a little bit out of it, and I'll get to that later. So on this particular issue, I'm all for the code, but we have to do a lot better than just taking money off the local businesses.
Okay, other speakers. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support this motion, but for an entirely different reason. The previous speakers, you could be forgiven for thinking this was all about parking. But in actual fact, it's redeveloping an area above a commercial business that's used for storage currently. And I think that's what we need to see more of, is making better use of existing buildings in our commercial districts. So the problem of where the residents are going to park their cars, that's another issue. But I think the main thrust of this particular application is converting an otherwise underutilized storage area to be a residence. And I fully support that.
Thank you. Other speakers? Rodri Poirot, Alderman James? Oh, sorry, Alderman Walker?
Oh, thank you, your worship. It is good to see this initiative and development happening. I can tell you that it won't be probably the only one that, that little area we see happening because having given it to both sides a little bit, there's more than twice of that issue. Yes, that issue and the chestnut and car parking comes up again. But again, when I joined this council, I think there wasn't a blank piece of paper. We sat around designing car parking policy. It was there, it was in place. And it's all well and good to do before the deliberations. But in doing so, what you're effectively potentially doing is trying to destroy value from all the businesses that have made decisions with them being rules in place and flipping it over. So I do support this, but in, I guess, Caribbean, we do really need to be getting, you know, that extra parking and decks nearby as soon as possible, I suggest.
Alderman James? Rodri?
Thanks.
So the motion is a recommendation for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously? I'll just point out at this stage, I've got ahead of myself in my enthusiasm to get on to the parking, on to the planning issues. And there were, there was one question on, notice one question there, notice, I'll deal with those when we finish the planning items. There are no deputations, I might add. 11.3.2, development application at 82 Eastern Highway, two model brick buildings. Alderman Newington, thank you, second up. Thank you, Alderman Pears. Alderman Newington?
Oh, look, I think, you know, as you just said there, repurposing existing buildings is one thing, but also allowing the increased density of properties throughout the city is something that we need to see happen. And this, I think, is an example of it's going to now increase the density, the opportunity for people in those more desirable areas. And I think they've jumped through all the hoops, they've done the work, and I would encourage everyone to pass this application and allow these guys to get on with doing what I think is a great development for this location.
Thank you, Alderman Pears.
Second, Mayor, this is 82 Eastern Highway, as most fancy order would know. Next door, a four, which I totally oppose, but looking at this site, it's totally different, it's totally different. It hasn't got a big wall body in front of a small unit there. And I think this is quite appropriate for this area. I mean, it's one new building, that's all it is. It's already existed growing on the side, and I see nothing wrong with this whatsoever. So I applaud and support the recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? I guess there's no need for Rodri Poirot if that's the case. So the motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. 11.3.3 is a development application at 20 and 30 Kangaroo Bay Drive at Rosney Foremarket. Thank you, Alderman Kendi, second to Alderman Newington. Would you like to speak to it, Alderman? Alderman Newington? Other speakers? Alderman Edmunds?
Also a question. Reading the paper at the week, is the market actually already going on Saturday? Can you explain the surface access to the top of watching the agenda?
General Manager?
Might ask Mr. Lovell to respond to that. Thanks, Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is an exemption in the planning scheme for the occasional community use such as this, such as the market. And the event that took place on the weekend was conducted in accordance with that exemption. However, it's not an ongoing entitlement, and that is why they've proceeded with this application.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman James?
Yeah, look, I'd just like to follow up on that in relation to Mr. Lovell's comment. Mr. Lovell, does that mean that the exemption may apply to two or three occasions as distinct from this one-off prior to this particular, getting a tick?
Through, Mr. Mayor. Yes, potentially it could. The scheme isn't really definitive. It's just, it allows for the occasional event. So it's quite plausible that events like this could happen here or some other place in the city two or three times a year perhaps because it's occasional. But what's being proposed in the current application is a regular event, and so it doesn't comply with that exemption.
Further question through you to Mr. Lovell. On page 64, Mr. Lovell, it refers to the advice section. And that goes through in detail about the handling food intended for sale or selling food must apply to register under the Food Act 2003 or food manufactured handling that is currently registered under the act prior to the commencement of use, the place of assembly license under the Public Health Act, et cetera. Have all of those matters as listed under advice A, B, C, D, E, F, G, were obtained prior to that event?
Through, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm advised that's correct.
I think they were.
Alderman Mulder?
I have a, just an issue. I mean, I won't repeat all the things I just said about parking in this particular area. But here we are with, this is the site, this can only possibly be temporary parking because we're going to build the Kangaroo Bay flats there, I believe. So what that suggests, and this report says that this, basically that this is a temporary measure in relation to the farmers' market parking. So the questions which arose, and I raised these at the workshop, at the agenda brief, the questions arise as to this actual area is used by Eastland in Stunt for Christmas parking. And we all know that the Saturdays leading up to Christmas are some of the busiest times, and not to mention the sports and things going on on the ground. So here we are, taking away all that parking. The other issue that raised a little bit of concern was that when Alderman Newington asked a question at the last council meeting in relation to the farmers' market in Kangaroo Bay and why they weren't up and going because of some press reports, he was then informed the reason a development application was lodged in relation to one we're discussing tonight is because that seems a good opportunity to be able to develop that as a permanent option to activate the area and also respond to potential business needs. So, you know, here we have at one stage saying this is a temporary fix and at the other stage saying it's a permanent fix in order to develop the options. Now, I understand that answer may have been talking about an option for the duration of the availability of that car park. But that then says, well, where are the customers going to park? When? Flights are built, so that we can not get, we don't get into a situation where we're putting even more pressure, which we'll have to do. Sorry, this is, this actually puts more pressure on actually building something in this area to service the needs on the long run because you can't permanently activate the area if people can't attend because they've got no parking car.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't manage to get to the market on Saturday. I did see a little bit of it on the news. It looked like it was a lot of fun. But I was turning right from Eastlands in the morning, and I observed that there were cars parked up both sides of Pembroke Place, which I know has quite a significant bend in it. And when cars park on that, it becomes very unsafe for the residents using that street, not to mention making it significantly narrower. I could see that there was a fair amount of parking in the space that Alderman Mulder mentioned, which is... Mulder mentioned, which is, um, at the moment used by Eastland staff. Uh, so it does seem to me that even on yesterday, Saturday, which is two weeks before Christmas, that there was a significant parking issue, and it's only going to get busier between now and Christmas, um, let alone what happens in the future. So I just made that observation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Rider reply, Alderman Kendy?
Oh, Alderman, I'd just say is I think the positives certainly outweigh the negatives here, and maybe it's something that we should really be encouraging our local community to actually walk through, and there's also similar, um, options that we do at South Banker, where people set up their stalls, then move their cars elsewhere, and that's something I think we can manage internally, um, with just a little bit of, um, uh, information going out to those stallholders and people that are going to attend, so, um, I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you, so the motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favor? Carried unanimously? And finally, under planning items, eleven point three point four is a development application at forty-four, a traverse of Crescent with access over forty-two and forty-six, traverse of Crescent Tranmere for two multiple dwellings. Thanks, Alderman Newington, second Alderman Pears, Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to it?
Oh, no, yeah, no, I'm just recommending, I think this one, Mayor, I think is pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Alderman Pears.
I'm very happy with the recommendation, man.
Other speakers? Motion, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, and that concludes our business as a planning authority, so I'll now go back to, uh, there's one public question on notice, uh, from Tina Byrne, general manager, if you could, uh, deal with that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have, um, question on notice, or in fact, three questions on notice from, uh, Miss Tina Byrne in relation to lease agreements. Uh, the first question is, in the new lease agreements between Clarence City Council and tenants of Clarence City Council properties, organizations slash tenants, are the tenants to pay the costs listed below? And Miss Byrne then lists seventeen points regarding a variety of matters. Uh, those points will appear in the, uh, in the minutes, I don't propose to read them all out tonight. Uh, the answer to that question is, yes, the tenant is required to pay or reimburse council for the above outgoing, and are responsible for the maintenance and repair obligations. Question two is, does the Clarence City Council pay the rates and Taz Water Consumption for all their properties leased to tenant organizations? The answer is no, the tenant is required under the terms of the lease to pay or reimburse council. And the third question is, is there any, is there any properties slash premises that the Clarence City Council leases that it also expects organizations slash tenants to pay for rates? And the answer is, as detailed in the previous question, tenants are required to pay or reimburse council for rates. That concludes the answer.
Thank you, and, um, there was also a question without notice from Victor Marsh?
Um, yes, I might, uh, I might ask, uh, Mr. Graham to respond to Mr. Marsh's question. Mr. Marsh's question is, on Thursday the nineteenth of November, and Thursday the twenty-sixth of November twenty twenty, cranes were observed conducting routine maintenance of the light banks and central joint of the light towers at Belrevival. The question is, who owns the light towers? Mr. Graham?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the towers are the ownership and responsibility of Blundstone Arena.
Thank you. No paper costs? Now, moving on to asset management, uh, the first item there, eleven point five point one, is that, uh, council adopts the several amendments, the Lordedale Marsh Reserve Activity Plan. I'll move in a second, please, Alderman Newington, thank you. Second up? Alderman Chong, thank you very much, uh, Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to it?
Um, oh, just to say that, I mean, I know a lot of work's gone into the developments plan, uh, Phil Watson, uh, our, uh, passive recreation guru's, uh, done a lot of work, and I can see that we've, we're now in a position to move forward and, and deal with some of the environmental issues that we need to, uh, protect that area in relation to some of the birds that are in that space, um, and I suppose the big issue we've got is, um, coming up with the dollars to, to make it all happen in the next few years, which is the challenge, and we've got quite a few master plans out there, quite a few of these, uh, recreational, um, activity plans, and there's certainly a few more in the pipeline, so, um, you know, that, that's going to be the difficult thing, is working out the order and the priorities on all these things, but, um, it's great to have it in place now, we just need to, uh, put our hats on and, uh, try and work out how we're going to fund all these things, you know, in the short, short, medium and long term.
Thank you. Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll just echo Alderman Newington's comments and say it's really great to have a guideline for what we do in this really very important environmental area.
Alderman Moller, and then Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, and, um, who can but support a, uh, a plan for a plan? But, um, I, I think a few important ingredients come out, and, um, a lot of these things can be addressed, um, well ahead of, uh, the activities that are being planned. Uh, you know, and sometimes if we're scratching around for money, we might need to prioritize this, I mean, you know, can the distant golf wait a couple of years while we get along with that urgent work, which I think needs to be brought, brought forward as quick as possible, which is some of the issues around the, uh, the conservation area, asset management area. And, um, at, at one thirty-three of our papers, um, the main themes addressed in the plan are conservation of natural values, particularly the naturally threatened ecological salt marsh community, protection enhancement of salt marsh habitat, and it's, it's all about that salt marsh habitat. Now, one of the biggest threats to that salt marsh habitat is the fact that the state governments built South Arm Road right across the, the tidal flats where it comes and backwards and forwards. In other words, what they've done is, a lot of the endanger, a lot of the local threatening and endangerment is occurring because of the, um, inadequate water flows underneath that roadway. So I think when we talk about these plans, rather than, um, holding off because we don't have enough money for a mini golf course, I think we need to take some urgent action in relation to what these reserves are designed to do, which is protect the species. And in that regard, the main issue with that, of course, is the natural ingress and egress of the tri, which, um, has got inadequate at the moment, uh, um, underneath the, beneath the roads, and although it's possible to enhance that flow with some more culverts and things like that, I think that, um, the long-term solution, uh, needs to be, uh, in this particular area, which is characterized by, um, some horrendous traffic accidents, and one only a few weeks ago. Um, so, in the, um, original, uh, Ralph's Bay proposal, I think there's only one thing that most people agreed on, um, and that was the fact that it had a proposal to run that highway, to run the South Arm Highway in behind the Salt Marsh Lagoon, um, and, uh, that then would, uh, provide, um, for its natural flushing and backwards and forwards. Now, obviously, that is a, um, I would suggest that that needs to be a question of road safety, it's not a question of priorities from the council, because we're going to take some interim steps in terms of trying to, uh, to build something underneath that. But in the long-term future, I think I just need to place on the public record my concern that eventually the relocation of South Arm Road is necessary from A, road safety perspectives, and B, to, uh, to do, uh, that, go that extra yard in terms of, um, some of our threatened salt marsh biodiversity.
Alderman James?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to refer to the, um, the recommendation in relation to the tip site, and part of the, uh, recommendation, which obviously includes the, um, that's the Lordedale Salt Marsh Reserve Activity Plan, is the comment in regard to amend the Action Plan thirty, and include the words sensitively design and develop a nine-hole golf course in the tip site. It's interesting that during the late eighties and early nineties, um, a group of residents, myself, took on this matter, and by nineteen ninety-five, we were successfully closing the tip. And that was for a number of reasons, because, and it's all listed on pages, twenty-one of the, uh, North Barker comments under Para Six, the old Lordedale Tip Site Passive Recreation Plan. So the government at the time had concerns about the lack of leachate containment, inadequate covering of refuse, inadequate drainage, and the use of the salt marsh community. Peaked in the early nineties, leading to the recommendation to close it in the nineteen ninety-five. So, look, my question through you to Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, it doesn't appear to be any, uh, comments in relation to, uh, sort of some testing and any other matters that, because the site's been dormant since closure in nineteen ninety-five, as to whether or not there is any, uh, leachate or any other, uh, refuse or any other drainage problems in relation to this. So firstly, my question is that it appears North Barker has not done any follow-up tests or it hasn't been part of its commission to provide this report. And secondly, has council undertaken any, any, um, through either a consultant or their expertise within-house to address or to make any test holes or make sure that there is no possibility of any lack or any leachate, uh, exposure on the site?
Mr. Graham?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is, is the old tip site was successfully capped a number of years ago, and testing at the time has resolved any sort of issues with it, but, um, I will further follow up and advise the Alderman if there's been anything more of a recent nature.
Appreciate that. Other speakers? Alderman Edmunds?
Yeah, just a base, uh, issue I brought up on Friday, around when we, can we update the report to, in attachment to, um, anything that's actually showed what the questions were, where we stood noting to refer back to the page where the, the full notes are. Um, and I know how much hard work goes into these things, and you work on a project for months and months and months, and then you hit print and some things go wrong. For instance, on one page, you've got your reference source not found, or just maybe if we just haven't, for instance, before we... Can we do that? We're actually getting something out of it.
Mr. Graham, uh, are you able to undertake to pick up on those slight, uh, corrections?
We certainly came through, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers? And thanks, Alderman. In that case, rider reply, uh, Alderman Newington. Put the motion there that, uh, council, um, where are we? I lost myself. adopts, adopts the several amendments to Lordedale Marsh, uh, Activity Plan two thousand twenty, twenty, uh, to two thousand and thirty, all those in favor? Uh, that's carried unanimously, thank you. Eleven point five point two is the real, reallocation of funds from the Wentworth Park Master Plan to the Cambridge Oval precinct Master Plan, um, for the active rec program. Thanks, I'll take Alderman Walker, second Alderman Newington. Alderman Walker?
Yes, indeed, uh, there's a bit of activity, uh, in, in the wings for this area, and this is a pragmatic way to deal with, uh, expediting some of that. Uh, it's also worth acknowledging, and I think that you see that in the paperwork, that, um, the evolution in this area has, has required a period of compensation, certainly with some of the neighboring interest groups, uh, not, none of which is, uh, none of the least which are always, of course, the school that, that Cambridge is, is a, is a school that's really bursting and thriving, so, um, I think this is, this is great to see this, um, this progressing ahead, and this is a pragmatic way to be achieving the aims and, uh, how it comes to this area.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Newington?
Uh, yeah, obviously, um, yeah, with the, the education department keen to, um, get their side of the, the, the school side of things sorted out, and they'll desire to get the dog park, and the sports grants in that area, um, planned out for the future. I mean, we know that the, uh, some of the soccer clubs are using that space, and there's an option to relocate the changerooms, um, so I think it's really important that we, uh, you know, keep them all moving at the same pace. Um, well, I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, there's been a couple of things that have, we've moved around in the budget of late from, um, funding for various sport recreation projects, so just want to remind my colleagues when it comes budget time, that, uh, you know, we need to make sure that we have these, some of these things that, you know, put back on the, uh, the agenda, um, certainly the Wentworth Park planning side of things, but, um, you know, I think, overall, I think it's a really important, uh, process for us to go through and allow this area to get the, um, the infrastructure that it's all united.
Okay. Other speakers? Alderman Edmunds?
Yeah, probably the, uh, mention of the previous two comments that, just to sort of say that this is, um, one, one situation is expedited, and so we've got a pragmatic solution to that, but it, it can look scary when nothing's been moved from one part of the city, so there's a piece of things that we can, to give it as they come.
Okay. Alderman Pears?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm pleased to see this went down to Cambridge, so it actually gets something done. As I've said to you before, we're certainly doing master plans on some of these things, and we cannot afford it at the moment, because it's a long time, so I'm pleased to see we're taking money for one master plan, get it to a now that we can finally finish, or we'll get an idea, a better idea of what's going to happen at Cambridge Oval, there's, uh, different types involved, now we've got, uh, the, uh, dog park, which will be fantastic, and let's hope, I think, when this is finished, I'll take it for a break, which I really do.
Thank you. Alderman Moller?
Just, just on the issue about these master plans, and, you know, we've often said how many of the master plans are there, we probably need a master plan to guide our master plan, and perhaps we need a list of the priority master plans, and do know more with some of these that we're not going to get to for years and years and years, than other than flag them up and invite people to, um, to, you know, put some unofficial proposals or more, you know, the interested organization agrees to unofficial proposals to us, um, and just maintain a file on the future ones, all right? So we can take any urgent action that is to be doing. So, um, you know, I, I am supportive of this, because we're switching it from a low priority to a high priority one. So in order to avoid doing that on a basis, and in order to spend, as we sometimes could do, spend all this money on the master plan, and then decide we're not going to go anywhere because we haven't got the funds, when we, and then have to go and spend some more money on something else, which, um, you know, and I think this is a really good one, and is to be commended. So, um, my only comment is, is that maybe it's time we reduced a master list of master plans.
Um, we will be looking at a priorities probably, with master plans as part of the budget coming up in February, March. Other speakers? Uh, rider reply then, uh, Alderman Walker?
Look, I, I thank everybody for their contributions on this matter, um, I'm very prepared to see it progress, and I'm a positionally supportive of it around the topic. Uh, on the issue of master plans and how we move forward, ultimately, that's, that's our head of power, and I guess we can get more muscular in choosing now on what we go with, um, so I look forward to doing that as we come up with the budget here, I suppose.
Thank you, the motion is that we reallocate the funds, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. Um, item eleven point five point three is that council authorizes the release of the flood mapping information to the community. Uh, look, Alderman Kendy, second Alderman Mulder, I think it was? Alderman Kendy?
Just expedite the flood, I think.
Alderman Moller?
Well, come as no surprise to those, um, who are frequently flooded and they are in the flood line.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, look, um, on page two fifty-three of the officer's report, uh, under the Para Three, three point one, I quote, "No community consultation was undertaken either as part of the development of the stormwater system management plan or the production of the food, of the flood mapping. Flood maps of particular areas of interest are currently being made available to property developers and designers when required." I think this is a, a really, a really important matter that needs to be, not only, um, circulate the community, but there needs to be some parameters on which they can actually seek additional information. Now, the motion that's before us is that council authorized the release for the urban areas and supporting explanatory information to the public. Now, explanatory information may be that this area is, um, uh, subject to high, low, medium or low-level risk flooding, and that may be all, it may be stipulated or spelled out within the, um, explanatory, uh, information. Now, I, if I was, um, living on a, on an area, particularly in the, um, Clarence Rivulet, on Bly Street in particular, as it crosses Gordon Hill Road, then I would be quite concerned, uh, about that, because this is listed as one of the higher-risk areas of flooding. I suppose one consolation, Mr. Mayor, is in fact that's mostly housing department homes, and therefore the impact of that and therefore the impact of that would, would fall on the housing department to be able to raise concerns with the local authority, which is the Clarence City Council.
Alderman James, I think we should be equally concerned with any threat within the city of Clarence rather than target a particular part of the area.
Yes, I know, okay. And that's very kind to sort of draw attention to that. I just gave example of that, just as, as a high risk area and therefore there are other areas as per the, the attachment. But what I'm saying, I'm trying to clarify here is that, that by just advising or authorising the release of a flood mapping and, and perhaps some supporting information in relation to it, I don't think it's going to really achieve what we need to achieve. And that is that make some sort of reference that if there is a concern by a private individual or a department or any other person for that matter, that there may be some means that the council can advise them to seek additional information to, to actually approach the, the insurance company or somebody. But council, as appears in this recommendation, is saying, "These are the areas" and, and, and this is a little bit of information about what the, the public probably needs to know. And then council basically drops this whole question in relation to where they go from there. I just think it should really have some other information in relation to, to basically advise people that there are means by which they can address these concerns and the local authority, council for that matter, may not be able to provide any information other than to say that here's the maps.
Um, I'm mindful that this is a publicly recorded meeting and that some of the things that you suggest there might alarm certain members of the public. Alderman James, I'd like the general manager to just remind us of just what the community engagement tools are. I think it's in the interests of the community as well as council that the facts are on the table in this debate.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, at page two hundred and fifty-four of the agenda, um, the relevant section headed community engagement tools talks about the, um, the approach that we propose to take in terms of community engagement on this subject. Um, relevantly, that section talks about um, the website, the Clarence City Council website, um, how hosting the flood map portal, which will allow not only designers and other, other interested professionals, but any person within the city and also any potential property purchasers to look at a granular level, at a per property level about what the flood mapping says for that particular property. We're also proposing to send direct, letters directly to property owners who we've identified as having properties in high flood hazard locations and that we'll use social media to direct interested members of the public to the relevant sections of council's website. Uh, there'll also be a media release in terms of this issue, making sure that as broadly as we can, we're advising the community across multiple platforms that this information is available. And of course, we'll have an ability to, for people to call us and ask direct questions in respect to a particular property. I hope that assists.
It, it, it may do, but you can send out a communication to residents, to property owners and others. But at the same time, you're not going to provide means by which they can seek further information. Uh, it's okay for the council on the one hand, Mister Mayor, to provide and, and state and provide these areas of, of high risk or medium or lower risk. But on the other hand, if they're in council, council will say, "Well, look, we're only here to advise you of these areas." And it doesn't really do anything, I think, for the property owners to be able to know what they can do in the event of a, of inundation to their properties. It just seems to be too broad and it doesn't provide any information on how they can seek restitution in the relation to if their properties are inundated by um, high levels of, of, of stormwater in the event of a, a high downpour or in a flood situation.
Okay, other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes. Um, so just thinking about stormwater as the issue, um, as Clarence has evolved, obviously density's increased and part services have increased. And although a lot of our stormwater infrastructure is in good shape, it has indeed often exceeded its lifespans and continued to do so. But as, as change patterns evolve, then that's something that I started and put an enormous amount of effort into. I think we benchmark pretty well with other councils in how we would attack that issue. But I guess we have a different set of challenges to some of us. Now, uh, through all this better information, um, we're able to share with people that are looking at making what is for almost all of us the biggest purchase of all life. And this is only going to aid and assist um, our community and future prospective members of the community. The idea that what's in this information might be a bit challenging, so you shouldn't do that. When it's, it's cataly著 that to any other thing, fire, wind, traffic, it's a plexus. So I think this opens on the agenda and this will be of use to our community and of use to people planning to build infrastructure in the community. And I would be bewildered to, to not support this question. Absolutely bewildered.
Okay, other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman Kennedy?
Uh, I'm just to thank Alderman James for something, Alderman Walker, sorry, for something that I've. Uh, I think this is a brilliant starting point and this information needs to be out to the public as soon as possible. So I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you. So the recommendation is that we release the flood mapping information to the community, all those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. I now like to move to new item eleven point five point four, Rosy Gold Course Site. And in particular, the recommendations from V that we develop a plan for interim use for the Rosy Park Golf Course area and present that plan to council for consideration at a future council meeting. That's the recommendation. Is there a supporter for that? If not, I'm happy to entertain an alternative motion. Alderman Mulder? Sorry?
I, I move the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for the recommendations? Thank you, Alderman Warren. Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, I'm moving this motion because in the discussions that we had at the workshop and with you and the general manager subsequently, I just thought it was inappropriate to have such a specific work action plan discussed in the term, in the same breath as we're discussing the strategic and concept, and development of conceptual plans for the whole Kangaroo Bay and Heart area and the risk that you ran of having this one issue potentially derail that particular vote. So I thank you for taking the alternative course of action to the one we discussed and the much more effective and efficient method of creating a new agenda item for this. So, um, the point is that, you know, we, when we did this, we made a decision, the council decision was to terminate the lease on the April the thirtieth. What that decision doesn't incorporate is some discussion, Mister Mayor, and I think you were a contributor to this, as were some others, um, about the fact that the, it was failing because of a poor business model on behalf of the not-for-profit operators. And, but that discussion, of course, isn't, isn't included in the decision because the decision must be taken as it is and not the reasons and not the discussions that occur around behind it. Nevertheless, the discussion occurred that the, the time up to April the thirtieth was a capacity for the YMCA to get their act together and perhaps look at their business model where you find people playing golf for something like about the cost of a tee. Um, you know, and they're playing three, four, five times a week on some pretty expensive real estate. Um, and, and I'm sure in discussions that we've had with some of them is a few of them wouldn't mind stumping up and paying a little bit more in order to obtain something that's very useful to them. Now, I'm not saying that, that I would necessarily support that or that we would get it going, but I think there ought to be an opportunity to at least have those people or at least someone else get up a business model. I'm not too sure if it could be successful, but we would, I think at least, be giving them an opportunity to do something like that in an interim, in an interim way. So what we're having here is a plan for interim use, which my original proposal was, "Well, why don't we just move that off until January?" Um, so how much of this interim planning is likely to occur in the next four weeks over Christmas anyway? And from my discussions, what we're only talking about is a plan to dig up the green so that it can't be used as a golf course and design a few gravel paths to get people used to moving through. So I really don't see what the rush was about in having it here tonight. Um, so because we won't be doing anything with that site for a few years anyway and the city heart's got a long way to go before we work out exactly what we're going to do on that. So, you know, I, I think there's the option for a business case for an alternative interim use if someone can put it up and, and one that is a little cost neutral to us managing the area. We've also got, I think some of us would like to perhaps have some input into these workshop plans. So maybe a workshop, you know, so maybe the officers can come back to us in January with a workshop prior to actually implementing the plans. And so I wouldn't see that as a particular problem. But as I said, I really don't see the need to actually, you know, plough into developing a plan for interim use until, you know, we've probably, as Alderman, had a chance to discuss it. So I'll be recommending that we defeat this motion and perhaps reconsider it after a workshop in the new year. That's not bad for someone who's moving it.
Alderman Warren?
Um, thank you. We're, we're so lucky to have so many wonderful green spaces in Clarence and I support this motion because it gives us the opportunity to invite the broader community back into the space and to get more of a feel for it. So it gives us an opportunity perhaps to try out disc golf rather than waiting for the tipsite at Lorda Dalmat, um, have people walking their dogs on leads, um, having people just, just enjoy the space and perhaps think about how they would like the space to be used in the future. And I'm sure that a number of residents will be really relieved to know that this is designated for community use. It cannot be developed for inappropriate, bulky, large-scale apartment dwellings or anything like that. It is community use. So I think that an interim plan where we get to invite the community back in so that they can start to look at the possibilities is, is an excellent idea and I support this motion.
Thank you. I just hand the chair over to Deputy Mayor for a moment to comment on some of the points that Alderman Mulder made. In, in the first instance, we need a contingency in the event that the, the current operators do not operate past the thirtieth of April, just assuming for a moment that they might, but if they don't. Um, and secondly, between now and the thirtieth of April, there aren't too many council meetings. And I, I think it is essential that the staff be able to develop a contingency, on a contingency basis at least, an interim plan for the site, uh, which would come back to a workshop and then be in, to a council meeting for a decision. To do all that before the thirtieth of April means that the staff have to start work on it pretty soon. And hence tonight, we can give them the green light that we want that planning process to start. So it'll come back to a workshop, um, probably February, maybe March, before it comes to a council decision for implementation perhaps at the end of April. So the timing is important that we get it underway and initiate that process tonight. Thank you. I'll take the chair back and call for other speakers, Alderman Newington.
Yeah, look, I just want to back up on that one, Mister Mayor. I mean, we're more faced with the situation with what to use it for with the, um, the YMCA came to us about the concerns they had about the viability back, you know, how long, six months or whatever. You know, we, we were flying blind at that point. And to get to that point and then now to be not thinking about what are the options moving forward, I mean, that would be pretty dumb on our part not to move down that path. Now, um, you know, I think, you know, the whole concept of the, you know, the city heart is something that we're all pretty excited by. I mean, I don't share the concerns of big ugly buildings like Alderman Warren does, but I mean, you know, certainly, you know, some form of sensible development throughout the city heart and possibly in here, I don't, I don't know the, what we can and can't do on that site yet, but I think everything should be out there for discussion if the community side of the day particularly like a, some housing as part of it, who knows? Who knows? We'll give the community a bit of a say on that.
Look, please don't interrupt. Um, we'll end up in a, you know, we've got to address comments through the chair with our site comments. So please keep it direct to me. But I think it is important to recognise the existing land use that we've got on the site and what can be there before we move forward.
Sure, but I mean, I think it gives us an opportunity to actually make an informed decision when we get to that point. And I don't think, you know, we can afford to wait any longer with the time lines we're faced with at the moment.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I've spoken to a lot of people about this and a lot of people would like to see the golf course remain until such a time that we've got money to actually, if we're going to change anything, to actually do this properly. One of the concerns I have with the people that are running it, everyone tells me their business plan and I could use other words for business plan, is pretty atrocious. And if someone was supposed to come along and for short term say to, say to us that we'd like to manage it, manage it, I think that's something we should also look at. Yes, if we're going to go further and, and, you know, an interim use plan, that's fine. I'd certainly like to see it come back to a workshop, workshops, because this is very important. We've got to get this right. We've got to get this right. I just don't want to see us just ploughing the, the greens and other areas of that land until we've got money to do something. Because if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Okay. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, um, so like many others around this table, this is the place I grew up in and this land was just under way, not, not too many years before I came to the world. Um, golf is something that scares me. I, I know a lot of golfers, I understand the concept and I fear that it is something I'll become addicted to and I don't have the time. It's, it's not something I really partake in. And I raise this to again reinforce the fact that, you know, these are the streets of decades past. But aside from glancing through on the Rosy Barn or a recital coming down the side, I don't really know this site. I don't know this site. And we are remarkably gifted. It's done luck to a certain degree that near the biggest shopping complex in Tasmania, we have this big green space, um, that has got endless sort of possibilities. But ideas will be much easier to evolve as, as us and the rest of the community get to, get to know this site better. And so this just seems a proven way to go about it. Yes, it is, dare I say, another use of the term plan. But the idea that you have no plan for that site and what that might mean, I don't, I don't think that's a great thing. So you could call it a city heart property bypass, you could call this motion anything you want, but it's, it's the avenue for a, um, a re-familiarisation with this site. And, um, we sit in this, this chamber and, and one month turns into three, turns into four years and into another council time keeps marching on. But for us to have that, that on its, on its commercial doorstep is, it's not unique, but it's incredibly rare. So, um, this rather benign looking motion if passed tonight might actually be the catalyst to leading to something great. So I'll see the endorsement of those around the table. It might not look, you know, that incredibly dynamic and groundbreaking as far as a recommendation goes, but its potential impact is phenomenal. So I encourage you to support the motion.
Alderman Evans?
Uh, thank you. Uh, first things first, um, to me, this conversation is not over about this site and the timelines, et cetera. We've got a decision on the rules that gave the golf course time until April. Um, let's say I find it difficult to stand in the way of contingency planning around that. In light of that, could I potentially suggest that we insert two words into the recommendation between future and council, we put workshop and, so the motion would be blah, 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 blah. Present that plan to council for consideration at a future workshop and council meeting. Present that plan to council for consideration at a future workshop and council meeting. Could I seek the approval of the movement of the motion to do that?
And second up? Sure, so that becomes the motion that workshop and prior to a formal council meeting becomes part of the motion, yes?
Thanks very much. That gives me a lot of comfort, because there's been put some great puns around City Hart already, so I might try to repeat it, but it's not pumping yet. Sort of dig up the greens and turn the taps off in this sort of expectation of people to fly into the space doesn't quite work for me. And in the interim, when we talk about interim use, I would definitely refer the golf course to a dust bowl. Alderman Walker refers to it being quite a benign motion. I have a feeling with the way this is all government, it's sort of benign motion after benign motion, and all of a sudden, the mountain of benign motions is all of a sudden quite a big beast that we have no real control over. Yeah, I have some other comments, yeah, around the, how many people actually will be invited into this space we've got. I'm not really sure what things are to, but, you know, we'll, we'll, let's see, let's see some options, I suppose, at that workshop. I'm yet to be convinced that if anything interim has, I think Alderman Piers said, we'll find that interesting, the golf course at this stage, in terms of the, also the cost that was presented to us when we made the decision more recently. And, you know, I actually tend to agree with something that was probably a bit off the conversation, probably that Alderman Ewington said, that, you know, that's a conversation I'd like to take on. This is a space surrounded by nobody. It's a huge area, absolutely enhanced by a bit of...
Other speakers? Right of, Alderman Chong?
So just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, when we first discussed stopping the lease to the YMCA for the, at the 30th of April, a lot of that was around the unquantifiable and somewhat unknown cost to council about keeping them there. It wasn't only about questionable business plans that have come up, it was also about the irrigation system and how little we knew of what maintenance would be needed and, and the costs that that would involve and the fact that that was our responsibility and we couldn't in all conscience take, take on that unquantifiable risk. For me, having said, that having made that decision, that that's what we need to do is to stop the golf course being there, putting a motion like this where we can actually look at what else we can do and how else we can make this land available to the public more widely, because the reality of the golf course is it's not widely publicly available. There's a whole slew of that land that people realistically shouldn't walk through and probably can't walk through on a regular basis because of the three golfers that are there. So for me, this is really important that we actually do some work on this site, that we find an interim use for it while we work through the process of the City Hart. That is going to take a while. This should be done relatively quickly to make it accessible to everybody.
Thank you. Any other speakers? The right of reply, then? Thank you, Alderman Molder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I was, your contribution was, was interesting, particularly the point about, I think that made it quite clear that our decision was that the 30th of April was the termination date. And there has been no discussion, as you indicated, and, and you indicated that, should they not continue? And I was pretty firm, and in discussions with the general manager, I was pretty firm with the view that golf was definitely dead, gone and buried as of the 30th of April, which would be in accordance with our decision. So, you know, it was a bit interesting to see that should golf continue, you know, saying that, you know, that should we continue, as, as if that was one of the options under the interim plan, where it's quite clear, and even the deputy mayor's made the point, that the decision has been made that we're going to terminate golf. And, and, and so, you know, I just like, you having made that statement, perhaps it's the general manager's position on whether he thinks there's any likelihood of continuation of golf on that point, at the end, it is needed at some stage, just for the matter of the public record. What we're talking about, of course, here is developing an interim plan, not the future plan. That's something that's going to come later out of, from, out of City Hart, hopefully, when it starts to beat. So, so that's the point, is that this is interim plan, and I don't have any great issues with it. My only concern was that we were taking golf off. And sure, it may not be, and I think I've said that in any business case, that anyone came who wanted to operate it, they'd have to factor that into account, and the, and the balance would be, you know, we are saying that $50,000 management fee that we're paying to the YMCA is actually the cost that it would have been to us anyway of maintaining it. So if someone comes up with a model that says, well, let's use it for golf for a few more years, and in fact, we won't, we, we won't require a $40,000 management fee because we're going to take it from the other golfers, I wouldn't see that as a showstopper, you know, from my perspective, but then I'm only part of council, and it would be the question of whether, whether anyone could possibly come up with such a business model. So the issue about whether golf is continuing or not, is, is, has any capacity, I think is something that needs to be addressed in this debate. The cost of irrigation, I think I've just dealt with that. So my only point is that I think that we should probably need to take a breath, have a, you know, a look at perhaps whether it is possible for a continuance of golf, as you've alluded to in your, in your address, Mr. Mayor, and then perhaps bring this motion back to a workshop. In the meantime, of course, there's nothing wrong with anyone getting out pencils and paper and, and having a little, little fiddle about what they think an interim use ought to be at the same time. I also would like just to make the comment is that just how many more patches of green space are we think are suitable for mini...
Alderman Morris? So the motion for the chair is as on the board there, that council authorised, as the general manager, to develop a plan for the interim use of the Rosy Golf Course area and present the plan to council for consideration at a future workshop and council meeting. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to governance, 11.7.1, that council resolved to approve delegations under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. Move Alderman James? Second Alderman Piers?
Mr. Mayor, this is a matter that has been introduced as part of Amendment to Section 56. It basically changes the actual subject, a new subsection, which has introduced a 28-day timeframe to amend or refuse a request in the attachment one. The Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993, under Section 56.2, the planning authority may amend the permit if satisfied that the amendment is not an amendment of a condition or restriction specified in, in this permit that is required, imposed or amended by the Appeal Tribunal. So there's still those appeal rights that can be utilised, it's just that it's drawing out that process and giving us a sufficient amount of time in which it can be met within that particular 28-day timeframe. I see council support.
Thank you, Alderman Piers. Other speakers? Motion, and all those in favour? Carry unanimously. Thank you. 11.7.2, special committee appointments. A note there that items A, B, C, and D deal with resignations from committee. Item E is a schedule of nominations where there's only one nominee, so I'd like to propose that we take a motion covering A to E first, and then we'll need to conduct the ballot for item F, unless there are any other nominations on top of this list. Okay, move Alderman Edmunds, second Alderman Chong for items A to E. Is there any debate? No debate? All those in favour? The motion is carried unanimously, and general manager could you help? Are there any other debates apart from Alderman James and Alderman Von Verdoe for the support and rec advisory committee as a proxy representative? In that case, could I ask, general manager, conduct a ballot for it, please, and ask Alderman Von Verdoe and James leave the room? So are we just put one, two, or just one on the one we prefer? How do you want it?
Just, just one on the, just one the preferred candidate, plus?
Just one on the preferred candidate. Thank you.
I think we follow the series of ballots.
We're going to, don't worry about distributing preferences.
I think that's going to draw some rotation on this.
It's an alphabetised world, let me tell you.
Remind them we are lies, this is all... Alderman Von Verdoe, five votes to four. Could I invite the two back in, please?
How many back were there?
Hmm?
Nine. It's nine, which is right, we're two out of, or blah, blah, it's not here.
I advise Sharon, Alderman Von Verdoe narrowly elected. Congratulations, Alderman Von Verdoe. Moving on to 11.7.3, the draft strategic plan that council authorised the general manager to initiate community consultation. Alderman Walker?
I move this motion to be held over to such time as another workshop is conducted on.
Do I have a second to that it be held over yet again?
Sorry.
Can't see a second to it. A second, okay, it's a procedural motion. I'll put the motion that the procedural, that the strategic plan be held over for another workshop, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Do I have a mover for the office's recommendation, please? Alderman Kendy, second Alderman Chong. Alderman Kendy, would you like to speak to it?
Um, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Chong?
Look, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I think there are things we will all disagree within the draft strategic plan, but I think it's very important that it goes at community consultation, and then we can have those discussions when that feedback comes back.
Other speakers? Alderman Molder?
This is a statutory requirement, it's not something you can just bounce in down the road and, you know, and it's a statutory requirement, as with most of those statutory requirements, at best it's a high-level guidance document, which meets certain obligations, but which can be adjusted as, as time goes on. I personally would like to see something much better from a strategic plan than something as short and as sharp as this. I would like something that actually gives us a lot more firmer guidance about where our priorities are, and as things I mentioned in workshops, I mean, what's a strategic plan for an organisation that doesn't even spell out the values that that organisation is committed to? So, you know, those are the sorts of issues, I think I've raised them before, but that a true strategic plan would have input, and that everything would be tied back to the objectives and to the strategy, and the strategies about the objectives, the mission, the values. And I can stand here and talk for, take up my full five minutes, waxing lyrical about why the wording in the mission statement is actually wrong, because a mission is a desired outcome, not a strategic plan for achieving something, so, you know, but, but it is what it is, and it's a statutory requirement, and it's a, as such, I think it's a, it's a further substitute for a genuine strategic plan, but it's got to be statutory, I guess.
Thank you, other speakers? Alderman Walker?
As could happen from time to time in this council, I quote the born Irish Tish Birdgarden, in hindsight or foresight, you probably would be here. And hindsight or foresight, then I think I probably should go on about this the way we did it around 2014. We had a quality facilitation process, it was a deep, it was pretty much a full day, it was a week, it might have been two half-days, and a lot went through. And for its year of around 2014, I think we, we made a really big improvement difference. And as we sort of go on to this, we had some other priorities as we braced ourselves for some larger nominations coming up here. And we've sort of been going about this with trying to tackle bit by bit as a workshop, usually by four, about nine thirty at night. And, and that's had some shortcomings. And I know that it is a statutory requirement, but in the totality of events, and again, when we're as prepared as, it's not going to lead to dysfunction in our key to getting us right. And, you know, given some of the stuff that I read in the audit, the general's report, you know, my uncle's shouldn't be getting to read it, some other people's, this is what I like. I've got some other issues about some of the strategic plans, I'm content. I, I already have some bureaucratic fiat which might be sneaking in in certain months. And we also have a looking approach, but I'm, I'm going to put in my hand, I'm quite nervous, and let's see what we can from, it was always a jolly round the table, but I think it's a good strategy.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman Kendy?
Not really, Mr. Mayor, but then I think this is about initiating, initiating community consultation, seeking feedback, and that's how I see this motion.
Thank you. So the recommendation is that we authorise the GM to initiate community consultation on a strategic plan, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. 11.7.4 is that we approve lease rental waiver on council-owned properties. Someone move a second to that, please. Alderman Ewington, a second, Alderman Edmunds? Alderman Ewington?
Oh, look, I, I think that's at least we can do for those organisations that are out there doing the, the community work on behalf of the wider community, whether it be a sporting club, arts group, community help, or whatever it is, but I mean, I think, you know, this is certainly one of the most targeted and most effective ways that we can actually support those community groups, calling for grants from businesses, like I know other counties have done, very ad hoc approach to do it. These are organisations that are, that are well-known and well-respected in our community. Some of them have asked for a little bit of relief, some of them haven't, but I think, you know, the fairest way for us to approach this is, is to do it across the board. When they've been shut down through no, fought with their own and through decisions made by council and state and federal governments, I think we, we owe them the, at least the opportunity to, to have those fees waived, and it gives them a chance to much-odd that they're here in the future and able to continue the work that they do in our community, which is very important. So I think it's a, it's a really good targeted way for us to show our support for these groups and, you know, making sure that they're still around in a few years' time, which is very important.
Thank you. Alderman Edmunds?
Yeah, just to really go, it's just been said, I was starting to be applying for, I think I know they can apply for, I think it might go to a project, but fair, I was just to touch on, I would do a point as well, it's called the decision made by this organisation, this was a decision, I don't know, it gets fair, that we can, we can show some suspenses and that.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right of reply? Okay, so the motion is that we approve the lease rental waiver on council-owned properties, all those in favour? Carry unanimously. 11.7.5, the City Hart project that we're dealing here with just points A and C, remember B is no longer part of this motion, and that we release the community consultation report and initiate the EOI process. If I have a move and a second to, please. Alderman Ewington, thank you, second up? Alderman Molder, thank you. Alderman Chong? Oh, sorry. Alderman Ewington?
Oh, look, that's one that's pretty straightforward. I mean, you know, I think as, I think it was Alderman Walker mentioned it a moment ago, we talked about the golf course aspect... Oh, look, that's one that's pretty straightforward. I mean, you know, I think as, uh, I think it was Alderman Walker mentioned it a moment ago, we talked about the golf course aspect of this. You know, we are very lucky that we have this piece of land in our city, in a very strategic location, and I think we should all be excited by the, by the opportunities that we will have in this space, um, and about what was really interesting to me in relation to the report, a lot of the things that came up, um, weren't necessarily just about the, the public open space on it, but how to actually activate that public open space. And they talked about hospitality, um, and entertainment, doing things on the earth so you don't have to go to town for, and all those sorts of things. I'm really looking forward to, uh, getting better connectivity between, um, you know, one side of the highway and the other, and I think they talked about a footbridge as being an obvious one for that, but I, I think, you know, we really need to put some serious thought into making sure that we can, you know, once in a generation, uh, you know, process for all of us to be involved in, and I'm really looking forward to seeing, um, you know, the next stage of this happening, so, um, I encourage everyone to support this and, uh, keep it all moving.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just, I'd like to just point out, this is a City Heart project, not the, um, the reuse of the Rosney Golf Course project. Um, we, we tend to focus on it because it is a prime piece of real estate, but I think it's a little bigger than that, um, and I think we need to bear that in mind, um, when you're talking about a City Heart project, and this is at the strategic level. What this motion is asking for us to do is to start developing some conceptual plans around some of the feedback that we've got from the consultation. Um, and, uh, and then just, um, the, uh, when I ran out of time the last time, I think for the first time I actually got gunged out in my, um, many years here, um, was that I was just gonna say, just, um, here we go again, disc golf. Is there a square handkerchief in this city where someone doesn't want to build a disc golf course? And the thing is, is we've just signed off on the interim plan for the, um, for Solparch, and, uh, and we've talked about now Rosney Golf as a golf course, so I was, I'm just starting to think, you know, um, somewhere in all of this, we've got to make some rational decisions about just how many disc golf courses we can have, um, or how many we think are appropriate, because there are some of those sporting facilities which sound all popular, yep, nice to have, um, and then, um, they fall into terrible districts you will use very, very quickly, and there you are, stuck with something that has to be modified now. Um, I'm happy to do that with one, um, but two, three, four, five, anyway.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Uh, yes, thanks, uh, Mr Chairman. The City Heart, and in particular Part C of the recommendation, it initiates an expression of interest process for the concept plan. Now, I was just trying to sort of get a, a handle on what the, um, expression of interest process entails. Does it mean that we're going to have, um, a property, a developer to come forward? And in one particular case, in the civic centre town hall proposal, which is listed on, on page twenty-six of the town's report, it says, and I quote, "There is a strong support for creation of a civic centre or town hall, a place for community events that is owned and maintained by council, but is able to be utilised by all community groups, et cetera." And it's talking about, um, a, uh, a suitable culture centre with a three hun- with a three hundred to four hundred seating capacity. So, look, this is far-reaching, this report from the consultant, but is it locking us in any way, shape or form into, um, and in Part C of the recommendation, that if a developer comes forward and, um, and has an interest or would like to propose and have, um, uh, and seek developer status? Is that something that council has basically earmarked as a possibility under C of the recommendation? When in fact, I thought this is really more of a, a, um, report that's publicly available for consultation process, and that at this stage, it's nothing more than that. It just seems to me that there is a lot of information in this report, and also too, it doesn't really address, in my opinion, the Charles Hand Park. I think that is a, a really important area, and it's within the confines or within the boundaries, I should say, of, of where the, um, particular, um, this report is sort of leading to. So, look, I, I just have some difficulty with Part C. It just seems to be locking us in to some process of development. There's nothing in the officer's report that I can see where it identifies what, in fact, an expression of interest process is. Is it from a developer? Is it from Hunter Developments? Or is it from some other organisation that may come forward with a plan for a civic town hall? And probably identify that as part of the Rosney Golf Course? Or is it part and parcel of Charles Hand Park? Now, Charles Hand Park's been underutilised, in my opinion, for years. It's one of the most beautiful areas to, for people to use. It's underutilised, in my opinion. And therefore, if, if it's part of the, uh, uh, City Heart project, then of course, we need to spend a little bit more time on that, but it's basically been ruled out, as I can see within this particular, uh, process. So, look, I'm, I'm in favour of Part A, but because of what Part C really is about, it just opens up, in my opinion, a Pandora's box, because it may lock us in to a, uh, a developer, uh, and, and also considering a, uh, expressions of interest from a developer. And by the very nature of, of C, initiate an expression of interest process, then by that very nature, it could mean that we may have another development within the City Heart area, and that it may be too late for us to be able to say, well, look, consultation is the first step, and this is not part of that consultation process.
Um, thanks, Alderman James. You've raised a couple of points there, which I'll ask the general manager to expand on, but I, I think germane to this is, uh, under paragraph one dot two, that this, uh, expression of interest process is aimed at, uh, design concepts. It's, there's no question that it will go down the same path as, for example, an expression of interest process at Gangaroo Bay, where we're looking, the aim of that was to come up with a preferred developer. In this case, it's just purely for the design project.
Can I agree to disagree with you on that?
No, look, I'm, I'm, you, you want to know what the intent of the expression of interest process is, that's my understanding. We'll ask the general manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I draw Alderman's attention to paragraphs, uh, two point nine through to two point twelve of the report, and I'll read them out because I think they're pertinent to the issue that's been raised. So, starting at two point nine, "In order to progress the City Heart project, council is now able to seek expressions of interest from suitable organisations for concept plans. It is anticipated the concept plan development will lead to a master planning process for the City Heart, which would then be subject to council and budget approval. It is envisaged that one or more concept plans may be developed. This approach will provide both council and the community with the opportunity to compare different ideas to the land, with the aim of ultimately settling on a preferred plan. The process for development of one or more concept plans would involve an expression of interest process, and may also include an internal submission by council officers. Uh, there is no intention to, um, head down the path of, uh, identifying a developer. Uh, this is about simply concept design, uh, that will ultimately inform a master plan."
There's nothing stopping, with respect, a developer to put forward a submission as part of a concept plan, so that's my comment.
Are there any other speakers, please? Uh, Alderman Edmonds?
Thank you. Um, I've all got to get five thousand cuts. I feel like this project's getting my five thousand cuts. Um, uh, there's times in your life where you feel like your head and your body's here, but your legs are already down there. And that's how I'm starting to feel about City Heart, uh, the rush that I feel. Now, I'm appreciative of this KPI for our general manager, and the maybe we need to revisit the scope or the strength of that KPI. Um, I was at Simmons Park on Friday, if you're there with me. The little girl wanders away from her family. Um, they're set up over at one set of equipment, she wanders over towards the gate. There's one of those things, it's like a coffee cup, just spins round and round and round. So she climbs into that, and it's sort of going slowly. I'm walking to my car to go and get the next load of things to take over the barbecue area. By the time I come back in, it's, it's not going like that anymore. It's going like this, this, this. The family's miles away. She's screaming because she's lost control. Now, I ran over and let her off, and she, she's sort of a bit traumatised. That's sort of a little bit how I'm feeling about the way and the, the rapid movement of, of City Heart. It's making me uneasy. Um, it's full steam ahead in little, little things that were kicking off wrongly, um, and it's sort of getting a bit of a luff in the same. Now, definitely I'm five minutes late in the combat on the machine, so I'm not saying that City Heart can go, but I am, I've got warning bells going up in my head, like my spider senses are just telling me to slow down. And whilst Point A, of course, I can explain why I have that, it's something we've worked out. Point C, I see the evidence for doing that in terms of we've got to have our legs up and they're just in this project, it's continuing the rapid pace that it is. Whether I want to be the passenger or each other, it just says, you know, let's just pull the hammer up, we don't just want to take that breath in the middle of the pandemic. Um, I don't know, we all like to say, I haven't had one person being so, I've had one person come in and go, gee, God, you know, I love what you're doing with that City Heart too. Well, people sort of like, what, what, what is it? Like, so, I'm just, sorry. Um, so, yeah, I have concerns about the pace this is going, uh, there are concerns that it could probably be addressed, but at the moment, I'm, um, not really feeling like the rollercoaster ride.
Thank you. Other speakers, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Edmonds, I totally agree with you, I think you're spot on. I, I'm just worried that, I said to the, the mayor, I said, I'd rather have a workshop on this. He said, we did one, if you pull a workshop at once tonight, I don't think that really got into it at all. I really think, like Alderman Edmonds said, we're rushing, I don't know what the rush is. Nothing's gonna happen over Christmas. I think a workshop, but I'm in a bit longer workshop than just giving it a quarter of an hour, to go through this and just understand a bit more. Now, Alderman Edmonds, I've been here a lot longer than you, but the thing is, we're thinking the same, so, you know, some, some is a worry, because I think if this, if this goes down, I, I would move that we have a, a decent workshop on this, and let's discuss it a lot further than what we're trying to do at the moment.
Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Newington?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, there's a phrase that I get, when I think about those sort of things, it's paralysis through over-analysis. Now, workshop after workshop after workshop, and we forgot, sorry, when we spent the money to get the report done by, um, the consultants, we put it out there, um, you know, that will stimulate more interest. Now, I, I agree with Alderman Edmonds when he mentioned that, you know, we haven't had people come and tap us on the shoulder and say, hey, can't wait for the city deal to come through. But we're not going to get anywhere near doing it then until we actually start doing this process once again. Now, I mean, it doesn't lock us into anything, we've got plenty of time to come back and look at all the proposals that come to us before we make a decision. But at the moment, we would have nothing more than workshop on. We would have nothing more to do, you know, it's time that we moved on with it. And the thing is, we, the other thing too that we've got to realise is that we probably don't have the expertise and the staff and, and the ability ourselves to understand all the possibilities that are out there in relation to how this could be developed and how it could be done. Now, this could be a multi-million dollar process, and we should be looking, you know, I'm not scared of, um, expressions of interest coming from a developer or expressions of interest or whatever, I mean, that's how you get good ideas. Now, that might include some public-private partnerships, it might give us the, the, the money coming in, that will give us a chance to do it sooner rather than later. So, all of these things that are going to come out of this consultation process and go to the next stage will help us to make better decisions. It certainly won't make us, won't help us to make worse decisions, because we won't do anything if we don't actually get the whole process moving. So, look, it doesn't lock us into anything, we know we have to do something with it, um, so at least it gives us a chance to sort of identify some of these options and get it out to the community. I mean, like I said, I mean, I think, um, you know, there, there's going to be a whole mix of different, um, structures and spaces and, and things that go along. We just need to look at it all and give everyone a chance to have their say, and then we can come back and look at it then. But I certainly don't think we're moving too fast. Um, I think we need to, um, get on with it and start making some, you know, strategic decisions on this sort of stuff, which is really what our role, one of probably the most important role that we've got in council at the moment. Um, and we can't do that unless we get this, uh, go into the next stage.
Thank you. So, the motion for the chair are items A and C, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Which brings us to Alderman's question time. Um, there are no matters on notice, uh, answers to questions without notice from a previous council meeting, I propose we take them as read. Moving to item twelve point four, questions without notice. May I start with Alderman Warren, please? Alderman James?
Uh, here's two questions. Um, following the decision of the appeals tribunal in relation to the Rosney Hill hotel development, um, and given that council agreed as the owner's representative to allow this particular development to go forward for consideration by council, what role does the Crown play in this, inasmuch as it is the owner of the land? And council is the managing authority of the land. In the next step, is it a case that the applicant has to apply for land owner's, um, ownership? And that is to the state government or the Department of Parks and Wildlife as the, as representing the, the, uh, actual owner of the site? Perhaps so?
Uh, general manager?
Um, thank you for the question, Alderman James. Uh, council is the statu- statutorily appointed managing authority.
Yes.
Um, we, uh, have a lease over the land, and, uh, we have control of the land in the context of, uh, the relevant legislation. So, my understanding of, uh, that situation, we don't need to seek landowner consent, uh, for, uh, any development on the land, although we do need to, um, make sure that the Crown and the minister are informed of the terms of the lease, and that the, uh, the minister is content with those terms.
A supplementary question, in relation to, uh, what happened with the Doran's Road jetty. Uh, it's my understanding that the, uh, it was refused by council, and one of the reasons why it didn't proceed was that the Crown decided not to, uh, provide his, um, consent for the, the built, uh, for the construction to be built at the site. Um, how does that differ then in, in the case of the Crown and Rosney Hill's ownership? When in fact, um, the Doran's Road, amongst other things, one of the reasons why it didn't proceed was that the Crown withdrew its consent for the development. And then on Rosney Hill, the Crown owns the land, and council has a lease, and that has also the managing authority. It does not own the land. So, therefore, is there a similarity between the two? And therefore, it would be expected that the Crown may have to be consulted as to whether or not it agrees or not with the building going ahead on the site? Perhaps you could, uh...
Draw some parallels here.
General manager?
That's a fairly ranging question. Um, I'll try my best to answer it. Um, we don't know, uh, the reasons why, uh, the Doran's Road jetty was, uh, rejected by the Crown. Uh, we haven't been informed of that, so any, any comment I made on that front would be pure speculation. The one material difference between Doran's Road and Rosney Hill is that we are the managing authority for Rosney Hill. Uh, we have responsibility for managing the hill, um, and that's been ceded to us by the Crown. Uh, as I said before, we have a lease, uh, that lease provides for subleasing, uh, with certain conditions. Uh, so the two aren't similar in any way from that point of view.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just wonder, with COVID, we could be sitting like this for ages. I'm just wondering if it can be looked at over the break, that can this room be changed slightly? I get very frustrated, Mayor, because you're blocked from seeing me, I'm blocked from seeing you. At times, I want to speak, but obviously, you know, you can't see me, I can understand that, because normally you would be sitting in the middle chair. I get very frustrated, and people have said everything I want to say, so what's the use? And it happens continuously. Nobody's fault, I understand that. I'm just saying, it seems to be, it's all new day.
Well, we're certainly open to ideas on how we better improve the urban dynamics, but the number of people is constrained by the overall space around. Um, Alderman Bertho? Alderman Walker?
Yeah, uh, thank you, worship. Uh, summer's coming along, and it's becoming more popular, I create, I just want to... Uh, summer's coming along and it's becoming more popular, can you just want to reiterate around, uh, community issues or concerns of areas of Little Harrow Beach. It's a lovely spot, but when the tide's high, there's not a lot of beach and it's quite a bit bright sort of on that wall around there. Uh, that's, again, if there's something, uh, could, could we add sort of extra lighting? Some dimension on that, you grow, Warren. Uh, and also the.
And the question is, uh, that we look into it?
If it can be done.
Okay, well, um.
With it, with it, with it. I understand there's been a lot of growth, Worship, in the whole of the municipality and, and sort of summer.
Okay, uh, we'll take that on notice and, uh, Mr. Graham, if you could, uh, let us know what can be done there?
Thank you, Sir Robert, Mayor.
To improve the amenity of Little Harrow Beach.
Yeah, and through you, I suspect to Mr. Tully, uh, you urge it. Uh, you mentioned to the Cancer Health Service's online forum, uh, if I can provide you with a breakdown of which nursing, allied health or medical representative groups have been involved in the formulation of this? And the number of clinicians that are actually using it.
Mr. Tully, do you want to take it on notice and, uh, provide a report back, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, if we could have it in the weekly briefing report for the benefit of Alderman, please. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Evans.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I have just some questions on notice, uh, through me, just go about the reservoir at, uh, just like the hill here. Um, I just wondered if we could find out, uh, I've probably, uh, could put these on the drawing, it would take too long. If we could find out the cost that Taswater originally spent doing that mural? And the cost that they've set aside for the replacement mural, once the work's done.
I can advise that the original mural was, uh, put in there basically by volunteers. Uh, Taswater did provide materials, uh, obviously the cost of that wasn't terribly great. Uh, but they were volunteers that did it. Uh, in terms of the cost of removing it and replacing it again, I'll take that on notice as Taswater represent the council.
Thank you.
And get the information.
Yeah, we'll ask them to set the budget. Uh, second question, um, we had our AGM, obviously.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Um, we had our, um, AGM last month, um, uh, last February. Um, and obviously, I was doing, um.
Shall I turn that off? Jeez. Cracks.
I had it on.
Can we, can we? Gee, where's this at? Yeah, I know. Right, okay. Uh, Alderman Evans, you may start again if you like.
Uh, and obviously there's, uh, uh, requirements around that being open to the public. Could we maybe, could we request the defense now, but, and then I, about how we, uh, actually communicated that that was open to the public? Because obviously people were, um, used to a COVID environment. We opened up the doors and no one walked in. So I just wanted, um, I couldn't find an address on Facebook or in the question. I'm sure there's probably something in the Saturday Mercury, but if there was, if we were able to give it a rundown, what was done and communicated to the public? If I'm interested to read it.
Yeah, I'll take it on, uh, at the moment, or Mr. Saddle is not here.
No, I'm just wondering, um, Julie, are you comfortable to answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, AGM was actually advertised in the Mercury and the same notice would have appeared on our notices section on the website, which advised that it was open to the public and that's why it was at Blunston Arena.
Alderman Ewing.
No.
Alderman Kim.
I hadn't actually planned to, um, something someone said earlier has prompted me to think about, um, summer and the last two days, uh, at Seven Mile Beach. Uh, and the question will come in a moment, um, obviously it's been very hot. There are people parking over, trying to get parks and they're parking out people's driveways already. Um, the traffic was so jammed on Sunday that people couldn't actually, there were traffic movements that didn't actually happen for quite lengthy periods of time. It was just crazy and I know the weather's just hit us very quickly. Um, but last summer, I believe that there was, and this is to Mr. Graham, um, there was some traffic management put in place, I think, with regards to some infringements or something like that. Or no, some people's cars, it's, there was some council intervention in this way. So I'm just wondering if there's going to be a plan for this summer similar.
It, it may be a matter for the Rangers. Uh, Mr. Tully, are you in a position to advise?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, we can institute that again. Last time, we did, uh, uh, put notices on cars, just cautioning them that, um, not, not to park there. And second, then we followed up with several other visits and people that were doing the wrong thing, we did issue fines to.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two. Um, one relates to the lease of the Rosney Hill area. And, um, it follows on from a question I asked previously and some discussions with the general manager, which would suggest that, um, we were across purposes about what I've asked. So just now we've had time to get our thought processes together. Um, I'm just interested in relation to the activation of that lease. So what, what point is the lease to the developer granted? And, um, what should, and how is that lease terminated? For example, should the construction not be completed? Or should the, um, or should the hotel, um, operator not come to the party at the last minute? Or, um, operates it for a year or so, realises it's a dead duck and then wants to walk away? So I'm just wondering what that means in terms of the lease, given the facts that we are the owners of the land. Um, so does that lease continue in perpetuity? So how's it activated and does it continue in perpetuity? And on what conditions could it be, um, you know, revoked?
General Manager, you're in answering a question, perhaps you can talk about the process. I imagine it'll come to a workshop and then a council meeting.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, in terms of, um, the activation of any lease, uh, that will, uh, be subject to some negotiation between, uh, council offices and, uh, the developer. Uh, so Hunter Developments. Um, that will come to council for a workshop at a, we haven't determined at what stage yet, but it will be at an early stage. Uh, and then I would anticipate a second workshop to talk about specific details and work through the, the actual context of the lease and the, and some of those key terms. Um, before council makes a decision to actually offer that lease in a formal sense. So because it's a dealing in land, uh, Local Government Act requires that council, um, uh, consider that. And, uh, and, um, there's a process associated with that. So there'll be at least one workshop, probably two, um, and then, uh, then a formal decision process to make an offer. Uh, in terms of termination or the other, other variables you're talking about, I'm going to lump them together for convenience tonight. Um, because this is a lease and not a sale of the land, we have an opportunity to deal with those issues and the outcomes that we might need to manage them should they event, eventuate. So, um, there'll be, uh, that'll be the process of working through that in the workshop and making sure that we've got a level of comfort about the commencement of construction, completion and so forth. Uh, so in that regard, the issues we've seen, uh, with the hotel site development, for example, uh, should be easier to manage under a lease than under a sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my second question relates to the, um, Rosney Golf and perhaps the general manager would like to address this one through, at the risk of contradicting the mayor. Is the continuance of golf on Rosney Golf Course an option even in the interim?
Uh, before I asked the general manager to, uh, um, in, in suggesting that there's a contingency planning that's involved, it wasn't necessarily suggesting there had to be a continuation of the golf. Um, the context of the contingency planning was exactly that.
I don't have the benefit of hand, so I don't know if I did, it wouldn't be this quick. But I'm pretty sure your words, in the event that it doesn't continue as a golf.
That's right, I did use those words, but it was in the context of a contingency. But, uh, I'm.
So my question.
The manager to proper.
My question is still a general, even in that, is that even a possibility in the general manager's mind?
Uh, that's a good question, General Manager.
Um, I might sound a bit flippant in answering this, uh, but anything's a possibility. Um, the decision of council, um, earlier this year was that the lease would cease on the thirtieth of April. Um, council didn't make any determination as to what would occur after that, although we did have obviously workshop and budget discussions around cost and, and issues. And from that point of view, we're tackling that through the, uh, interim arrangement for the City Heart project. So council, it is open to council to make, uh, any other decision about that land that it wishes to make.
So my point of clarification and supplementary, what you're saying is that if golf were to continue on that site, it would require a motion from this council?
Uh, it would. And, uh, just picking up on a point that was made before about, uh, potential other operators. Um, from a probity point of view, if, um, if there was a view towards, um, golf continuing but under a different operator, it's, uh, in all likelihood necessary for us to go to the market and not just simply, uh, appoint someone who's come forward. There'd need to be a proper process.
Alderman, thank you for that.
Uh, Alderman Tom.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, can I just ask whether Alderman are aware that the, um, Christmas Day brunch, which we run in conjunction with the Salvation Army, has been moved to the Kangaroo Bay Pipe Plains this year due to COVID number constraints? And to say that should any of you desire ten thirty till twelve thirty, you are more than welcome.
And, and the question is, Alderman Tom?
Are they aware that it's been moved? That was my start of my question.
Well, on, on that basis, um, can I draw this open? Can I draw this, uh, open session of, uh, council to a close, noting that this is the last one? And take this opportunity of wishing all members of the public that have been tuned in the very best at Christmas and a safe and, uh, prosperous new year. And let's hope that, uh, twenty twenty-one is a vast improvement on twenty twenty. Uh, so thank you.